...war, tonight, tomorrow, next week. The president tells us he wants to destroy Iraq's weapons of mass destruction, depose Saddam Hussein, bring democracy to Iraq in the Mideast. At this hour, the administration is lobbying hard at the United Nations, trying to get the votes needed to pass another resolution backing U.S. war plans. Our allies are divided, the Mideast is divided, our own citizens are divided. For the next 60 minutes, we will try and sort through these divisions. A New England town meeting is next. Good evening. We live in very difficult and anxious times. We have a wonderful group of people here, members of our town meeting and our panelists, to try and shed some light on the many questions that I know each of us has. We begin here with introductions with Congressman Marty Meehan, who represents the 5th Congressional District here in Massachusetts. He serves on the House Foreign Relations Committee and a new subcommittee on terrorism, sign of the times. Congressman Jeb Bradley, representing the 1st District of New Hampshire, newly elected to Congress, also serves on the House Foreign Relations Committee. Turning to our panelists, Dr. Andrew Basilevich is the head of Boston University Center for International Relations. He served 23 years as an officer in the United States Army and has taught at West Point and Johns Hopkins. Dr. David Barlow is a professor of psychology at Boston University and heads their Center for Anxiety and Related Disorders. You can tell why we asked him to come. Dr. Farouk Al-Baz is a research professor at Boston University. He is Egyptian, and at one time was the science advisor to President Anwar Sadat. His brother now advises Egyptian President Hosni Mubarak. Dr. Andrew Hess is a historian, a Mideast scholar, a former Marine, who currently trains future diplomats at Tufts University's Fletcher School of Law and Diplomacy. And Evan Grace is an economist and market strategist at State Street Research here in Boston. Thank you, people, for coming. And our audience, our town meeting members, are from a cross-section of New England. We have asked our congressman to begin this conversation by making the case for and against war. And I understand it's not that black and white, but what is it that we hope to achieve? The losses and the gains? I want to start with Congressman Bradley.
Well, certainly, at this grave moment in our nation's history, I don't think any American wants war. I pray for peace every day, but at the same time, I think we have to look at the facts that the United Nations has established, that Saddam Hussein has these vast quantities of chemical and biological weapons, that he is not disarming. What we have is inspections for inspection's sake. What we need to do is disarm Saddam Hussein. I pray that we can do that peacefully, but it is not happening up until now. And I think that represents a threat to all of our security.
Congressman Meehan?
Well, I would agree it represents a threat, and I believe that Saddam Hussein should be disarmed, and I believe that military, the threat of military force is an important component to get Saddam Hussein to disarm. The question is, how are we going to go about doing it? If we've been trying to conduct diplomacy, it hasn't been going particularly well. If you look at since September 11th, where the, really, the whole world joined behind us after September 11th, now we see anti-American rhetoric coming from all over the world. We need to do it right. That means getting a U.N. Security Council resolution. One of the things that bothers me is when Secretary Powell is conducting diplomacy on the one hand, and the Secretary of Defense of Rumsfeld says, "Well, we don't need the old Europe, but we need to, you know, we only need the eastern Europe countries. We need to do this right." And if we don't do it right, it's going to cause some serious damage to the country in the future.
Dr. Basilevich, what kind of war do you envision? We've seen the United Nations searching for weapons and not able to find them. I mean, what do we shoot at, then?
I think, in a very real sense, the war is already underway. I mean, we forget that we have been engaged in a low-level, low-intensity bombing campaign against Iraq for over the last four years. And in more recent months, we have been engaged, we've been numerous reports about special operations already in-country, developing targets, doing reconnaissance. There appears to be a major psychological operations campaign underway to persuade the Iraqis not to fight. Now, when the, when the big operation begins, I would expect that what we're going to see is, right at the outset, a major air campaign, the purpose of which will be to convince the Iraqi army not to fight and to decapitate the regime so that Saddam Hussein is not able to effectively direct the fight.
Does that mean kill Saddam Hussein?
I'm sure that they will make the effort to do so, but he's a very difficult target to reach. In a perfect world, that air campaign is essentially going to end major resistance, and the ground intervention will be sort of a, just a walk. In a less than perfect world, we'll end up having to fight our way into Baghdad.
And we'll get into more, how long we might be there and so forth, as we continue our discussion. Dr. Al-Baz, you certainly understand the Muslim world, you're an Egyptian yourself. Do you worry that the Muslim world, if we begin this war now, would rise up in unison against the imperialist Americans?
I don't really think so. It's going to be this way at all, because the people in the Islamic countries are of the opinion that Saddam Hussein must go. But they think that this is not the way to go about it, because they want international pressure on him by an approval of an international community like the United Nations. They want something from the United Nations to come, to say, "Yes, Saddam Hussein must do this, et cetera, and if he doesn't, we will do this and that." So it is not the fact that the Muslim countries or Islamic countries will just all revolt against the U.S. at all, but it is the fact that many of these Islamic countries will follow the, some of the European countries and others as well, that say that is not to go about it. So there will be some demonstrations here and there, but the objective of everybody, including Islamic countries, is get rid of Saddam Hussein, but not in that way.
Dr. Hess, many people see this as a war about oil. Can you address that?
Oh, I think it's much bigger than oil. In fact, I'd like to explain why it is a bigger event in sort of geopolitical terms, old-fashioned way of thinking about this area. First of all, this is the Middle East, and it's the heartland of the Middle East. It's an area that links together Europe, Asia, and Africa. So anybody that messes around in the center of the Middle East really is in a good position to control events elsewhere. If you can think of it as where you're going to go, how are you going to go from London to Singapore? If you go that way in an airplane, you cross through this area. So it is important geopolitically, and then right in the middle of this region is Iraq, and Iraq sits in between the Caspian Sea and the Gulf, and that entire area controls or has within it about 70% of the world's proven oil reserves. And then the region also is a center of importance culturally speaking for three great universal religions. So anything that happens in this region that gets on television and broadcasts to other areas, the world affects the members of those three religious communities, and all of that can be very divisive.
Mr. Grace, this war is likely to cost many billions of dollars. In this already shaky economy, what do you see is happening to the U.S. economy?
The economic impact of a war is potentially quite profound, and we're already starting to see some of the effects. For example, in the period leading up to a war, what you have is tremendous uncertainty. And in that uncertain environment, businesses are loath to put forth lots of investment. So there's less capital spending, less business spending, and as such, just generally, a lower level of economic activity. Similarly, that filters through to consumer confidence. We've seen that falling pretty far off, as nobody really knows quite what to expect. Also keeps the labor market that much more sluggish. People concerned about their jobs. Additionally, you have the impact of rising energy prices, which are anticipating the possibility of energy supply disruptions from the Middle East, and that pinches consumers' pocketbooks by forcing a larger portion of the consumer's budget to spend heating their house and filling up their car with gas, as opposed to more nondiscretionary items with a bigger economic effect.
And Dr. Barlow, concluding this introductory round here. Last week, we heard Tom Ridge, head of Homeland Security, urge people to buy duct tape and so forth, and stock up on home canned goods and that kind of thing. And I don't know if that did any good, other than to make people particularly angry and feeling maybe even more helpless, which clearly was not Mr. Ridge's intent. Do you have any advice on the anxiety level? That's what you study and deal with?
Well, we, as psychologists and psychiatrists, have been studying the effects of war since World War II. And I think if there's one thing that's very clear we shouldn't be doing, it's giving out yellow and orange and red alerts, and telling people there's a vague danger somewhere out there without giving them specific steps to at least have the impression that they're coping effectively with the danger. And I think the, you know, the fiasco over the duct tape several weeks ago shows that people want something to do to cope with any anxiety, tension, danger, and they may go to extremes. But think of what they'd do if we gave them some appropriate ways of coping, if we created some community action groups, for example, as they did during the Blitz in London in World War II, to have specific tasks. Even if it didn't do much good, it gave people a sense they were in control of their lives and not just the subject to some random vague orange or red alert, and who knows where it's coming from, and what do we do?
Do you think, Congressman, do you think these alerts are good or worthwhile, or do you agree with Dr. Barlow?
I agree. Maybe the first time there's an alert or the second time, but when it goes on and on and on, no, I don't, I think it just makes people frustrated. I think we'd be all, all doing a lot better if we released the money for Homeland Security so that we begin to fund the front lines of the fight for Homeland Security. Police and fire in this state, who have been working to develop a strategy, don't have any money. So I think we ought to get real in terms of funding it, if we're going to be safe.
And actually, in the '04 budget, there is going to be a large increase for Homeland Security. We're feeling our way with this new agency. It has been created to protect Americans. It's a good idea. Governor Ridge will be an effective secretary, and I believe that, over time, we are going to be much safer by virtue of the hard work that all of us are doing in Congress and the administration.
All right, we'll take a quick break here and be back with more of our discussion. In the meantime, listen to this comment from Senator Kennedy.
We have to ask ourselves before we start sending our troops to Baghdad about whether we're going to be able to deal with Homeland Security in ways other than using duct tape.
Our town meeting members at this time, who wrote in to us, gave us some idea of their opinions on this issue. Bill Hartnett, you spent 10 years in the Air Force with a tour of duty in Vietnam. You wrote, "The sites referred to by Powell, all had been inspected and nothing found, and reporters were brought to them today, and it was a joke." Would you like to stand up and expand on that?
Well, they went over it piece by piece, and Hans Blick, even in his last remarks, said that CNN, by the way, took out the 850 words out of the statement that he had and posted it on his website, which I don't think the media is covering properly. The U.N. Charter states specifically, "The threat or use of force against territorial integrity or political independence of any state or in a manner inconsistent with the purpose of the U.N. must be renounced." I don't think our president is renouncing it.
What do you say to that, Congressman Brown?
Well, if there's any lesson that we should have learned from the 11th of September, it's that if we have prior knowledge of a storm gathering and coming our way, as we did on the 11th of September, that we should be prepared to act. And I think the United Nations has laid out a clear and compelling case of some 30,000 pieces of munitions and chemical and biological weapons that represent a threat. And so hopefully, we can disarm Saddam Hussein peacefully through the inspection and disarmament process. But until that happens, this country and Saddam Hussein is a threat to the world's security.
Doctor?
This would be the proper argument if Saddam Hussein actually presents, represents a threat to the United States. But Saddam Hussein is, does not represent a threat to the United States in any shape, form, or manner. So he does represent a threat to his local community, yeah? But there are many others like him all over the place. So it is not, so to keep a threat to the world's United States is very good, yes. We will all agree with it. But he, that guy, does not represent that.
Congressman, I resent your comments about September 11th. Not even the Bush administration has stated that Saddam Hussein had anything to do with September 11th. So I don't understand what, where you're coming from.
Congressman?
The point I'm trying to make is that, on the 11th of September, had we known, and there were threads of that information, would we have taken preemptive measures to protect our security? And I think the answer clearly to that is that we would have. And that's what I meant. And I think that when the world's security is a threat, when American security is a threat, we have to protect our security. And hopefully, as I keep reiterating, we can disarm Saddam Hussein through peaceful mechanisms. But so far, that has not happened. The world community has clearly stated, time and time again, through United Nations resolutions, that Saddam Hussein represents a threat to world security, and that it's time that he is disarmed.
Dr. Basilevich?
I think the anxiety that we hear from the questioner is reflective of a larger issue here. And that is that this is not simply about overthrowing Saddam Hussein. This is about establishing a precedent. And the precedent is that the United States will assert the prerogative of using force preemptively. And the rest of the world, even, even if the rest of the world says they'd like to see Saddam Hussein goes, I think that the rest of the world is understandably nervous about the notion that the United States is going to perhaps routinely exercise that prerogative of preemptive force.
And that's why it's so important that we go about this the right way. If the U.N. Security Council were to support a resolution or if they would pass another resolution, I think the international community would respond differently than this notion of, "We're going to, we're going to get them dead or alive, we're going to go, no matter whether you're with us or against us, whether the Security Council does this or that." The reality is, we can win this war militarily alone. We cannot do what we need to do after the war in Iraq alone. We need to have all the countries of the world with us. And I think the only way we'll do that is if we work through the United Nations, which so far, we have.
Go ahead.
I think that's an appropriate comment in many ways, because one of the things that happens whenever 9/11 is brought up is that we immediately move away from the people who actually were engaged in 9/11 and the organization, which was al-Qaeda, and we start focusing on Saddam Hussein. And then what the congressman said is, "We're not going to solve the greater problem which al-Qaeda represents, which is terrorism spread out in networks all over the world, unless we have agreement from everybody else on what the right thing is to do to stop this." And apparently, that's not happening in the case of the United States and Iraq. And part of the reason for that is other people don't believe that what we're doing is really an attack upon terrorism, but rather something having to do with our relations with Saddam Hussein and our position in the world in terms of power.
You're nodding in agreement, Doctor?
I'm actually saying that it is even more than that. I think that the war in its present shape might actually derail our war against terrorism. So if we provoke the 9/11, we shouldn't really do that in this case, because it might weaken our response to the 9/11, because to be very vigorously attacking anti-terrorism, we need the, the cooperation of the whole world, nations in Europe and the Middle East and Asia and all of it. So to do that, we really need the approval of the, the whole world, and to keep, to keep them with us.
And is that likely to happen here? But getting back to the terrorism, there are many Americans who are perhaps in this audience here, and feel free to raise your hand and speak up, who are afraid that this might bring, unleash more terrorism in our, our country. Sir? Just hang on a second, give this young lady a chat. There you go.
Well, I'm, I'm very concerned about the fact that it might unleash more terrorism. And I'm also concerned that the President of the United States is in fact going around bullying and bribing other people in the United Nations to join onto his program. He's also said he'd willing, be willing to go alone. He said 10 million people out in the streets protesting against this war was a focus group. And frankly, I see that Congress is sitting back and not doing anything. Congress passed a resolution that seems to turn the, the right to go to war over to the President, and now they're stepping back and watching what happens. And I think it's time that Congress stepped in and did something. My son is on a ship in the Arabian Sea right now in the Marines, and I'm wondering if he comes back in a body bag, if the members of Congress are going to feel like they did everything possible to keep this war from happening.
Gentlemen?
Well, first of all, on the resolution, I believe that the resolution is part of the reason why the United Nations passed the latest resolution, and it's part of the reason why there are inspectors in the ANO. Remember, and give the Bush administration credit for this, we now have inspectors in Iraq. There had been thrown out for four years, we had no inspectors. The entire world is now focusing on weapons of mass destruction, biological and chemical weapons in, in Iraq. And I think that that's a positive thing. The question then is, is the President going to conduct this tough diplomacy? And it's not easy, it's a difficult job, but I believe that if he does it correctly, and frankly, I think Colin Powell has done a pretty good job of negotiating with the other, with the other countries. And we have to see how that resolution plays out. You know, it's the same, just before the resolution was voted on the first time, it was unanimous vote. There was a lot of talk about this country might not be there, this country, that country might not be there. Let's see how it works out, but they need to focus on diplomacy.
But again, I would say, we're bribing those other countries. We're going to give $30 billion to Turkey to allow our troops to go through. Clearly, the governments are separated from the people in a lot of those countries around this issue. And, you know, in terms of the inspections, I think it's wonderful that they're there. If we've got $100 billion to throw on, away on a war, let's give $10 billion of it to Hans Blicks and see what he can do.
The problem is with the inspections, Saddam Hussein has not accounted for the vast quantities of weapons that the United Nations says that he has. 30,000 munitions, 7,000 gallons of anthrax and botulism. When are we going to see real disarmament, so that countries in the region are not threatened, Western Europe, Israel, the world community is not threatened? And that's the problem. He's had so many opportunities that he's not taken advantage of. I continue to hope that we're able to resolve this peacefully, and your son, thank him for his service to his country. We have to make sure that we complete this process, hopefully peacefully.
Dr. Basilevich?
The real issue here is not disarmament. I mean, that's the term that sort of the discourse uses, but the object of the exercise is regime change. If Saddam Hussein tomorrow, in all honesty, said, "Every door is open, cooperation is absolute," that would actually be a defeat for this administration. That's what his father accomplished back in 1991. So the aim here is regime change. And it's regime change not only for its own sake, but because the insertion of American power into Iraq is the first step in a much larger project. And the project is to bring about political change in the region. I'm not advocating this, but in the eyes of the administration, that's the essential method whereby another 9/11 gets prevented, because there, the conditions to, the breed terrorism will then no longer exist. That's the real game.
All right, thank you. We'll be right back. We'll take another break here, be back in a couple minutes.
You will remain in Iraq as long as necessary, and not a day more. America has made and kept this kind of commitment before.
Dr. Andrew Basilevich is going to have to leave us shortly. Would you address that from a military standpoint? How do you, what is "long as necessary"? I mean, who decides that, and on what do you base that decision?
I think the key principle here is to remember that war is the province of uncertainty. We are overwhelmingly more powerful than the Iraqis. We're going to win. But the truth is, nobody knows how difficult the war is going to be, how long it's going to last. And therefore, nobody can say with any degree of certainty how much damage to Iraq is going to result from the war. Nobody can say with uncertainty how much disorder will follow in Iraq subsequently. And as a result of that, people can bandy about, it's going to take 100,000 troops, several hundred thousand. We don't know. Nobody knows. My own guess would be that it's going to be a longer period of time of presence, rather than a shorter one, probably measured at least in years.
All right, Dr. Basilevich, thank you. I know you're rushing to catch an airplane. We appreciate, appreciate your coming here tonight.
In fact, there was a controversy this week in Washington. General Shinseki, who's the Army general, said before the Senate Armed Services Committee that he expected the need for 300,000 troops. And Paul Wolfowitz, who's the Deputy Secretary of Defense, came out and he looked pretty upset with the general, and he said, "Oh, I don't think we'll need anywhere near that." The bottom line is, the administration has, has to tell the truth about what we're up against here, and needs to tell the truth about the long run. This is, the comment that was made, "We're going to stay as long as we have to, not a day longer," that could be anything.
Of course.
That could be five years, 10 years. The fact is, we're going to have to stay there and try to set up some kind of system of governance. That's going to be a dangerous task, it's going to be a difficult task, and we ought to tell the American people what it's going to cost and who's going to be involved.
And you people know the Mideast very well. Is that going to, is that going to play?
There's another worrisome issue, which is, what goes along with the, the President's remarks is always some statement about democracy. That is, we're going to have set up a democratic regime in, in Iraq, and then that's going to immediately trigger all sorts of political changes elsewhere.
Is that realistic?
There, there's nobody that really believes that, that takes a serious look at what's happening in, in the Middle East. The Carnegie Foundation has a website and a section in the foundation that concerns itself with democracy and the spread of democracy. And they say the last thing that's going to happen is that there's going to be an immediate collapse of these old regimes in the, in the Middle East, and everybody's going to turn in the direction of democracy. So if we are going to stay around to impose democracy, which I hope happens eventually, it's going to take a long time.
So is that realistic, that the people would even want a democracy?
What he said is really true, because what, what should be talked about is more like the social justice and the better development plan for this, for these people. Because when you say democracy, if you conceive of it in the way we understand democracy, we have the presidency and the, the House and the Senate, and these people are doing this and that, and the laws and so on, well, a lot of regimes in, in the Middle East will tell you, "We're democratic." Mubarak would say that. "I am democratic, I'm elected by the people, I have a constitution, we have a parliament that is just like the Congress, and we're doing this." What, what do you mean by democracy? We have it. We've been going for democracy for over 20 years. So this is their perception, and some of the people there, the writers and the intellectuals and so on, actually believe that. So when do you say with democracy, what do you mean? You mean, you mean you want some, a, a constitution?
You actually want to run against somebody?
Yes, yes, they have. And we're not really here, we're in America, we're not a democracy, we are a republic. We are a republic. It's not a democracy, because there are all kinds of democrats. And if you say, "We're going to make a democracy," does this mean everything will be hunky-dory? Not necessarily. Hitler was elected, he ruled a democracy. Maybe this is all time. How about Chavez of Venezuela? He's a democratic man who was elected, and he's ruining the place. So it is not the fact that when we say the word "democracy," it will change things, not necessarily.
Sir? Or ma'am? Who's it?
Many people believe that if we had a true democracy in Iraq, as we know it in America, that what would happen is they would elect someone like Osama Bin Laden, or religious fanatic. And how would America be able to control that and still call it a democracy?
That's a very good question, actually, because the only really well-organized groups, political groups, in these, many of the Islamic countries are the fundamentalists, the nuts about religion. And there is a great deal of fear from regimes like in Saudi Arabia and Kuwait and so on, that if you open the door totally and have people elect whoever they want, because these are the people that are organized, they will take over and will have havoc at our hands.
Right up front here, just hang on, give us one second here. Okay.
I think what we're talking about is the latest effort on the part of the Bush administration to give us a justification for this rush to war, and that is nation building. And I grew up in an Army family, and we, one assignment we had was in Panama, where there was a jungle school, where thousands and thousands of soldiers went through to prepare them to go and die in Vietnam. And what happened in the end? We left, because there weren't, there wasn't a government that could take over and run the country. And in Iraq, there are the Kurds, there are the Sunnis, and there are the Shiites. We've heard in the news, the tragedy of ethnic violence. The American people know about that. Who, who assumes that we're going to be able to do any better in Viet, in Iraq than we did in Vietnam? And the people, when we say "we," we're talking about our soldiers, who I love and care about, not just this, this family's son, but the 200,000 human beings, who are not sitting in Washington, but who are out there, doing what they're told. And it's our responsibility to make sure that there's a reason for them to go, and there isn't.
You know, Congressman Bradley and me, and I think that this lady expresses one of the greatest concerns, that there's no great purpose to this. Here we are debating, are we after democracy? Are we after nation building? Are we after oil? Are we after revenge with Saddam Hussein? And we've never, in our lifetime, I don't think, lived through a situation where we're debating the very purpose of war in this manner. So I don't know how you, how you deal with that.
Well, first of all, it's interesting, because the President ran for president, saying there would be no more nation building. The reality is, this could be the nation-building campaign of all The reality is, this could be the nation-building campaign of all nation-building campaigns. But there are some times when the United States can play a positive role in other countries. In Bosnia and Kosovo, the United States has eliminated much of the ethnic cleansing that's been going on. I think we need to lay it out to the American people. This isn't just about military action and forget it. What the president needs to do is lay out his vision. The reason, and I didn't use the term "democracy" when I talked about what's going to be left there. I said, "Some kind of system of governance." What that's going to be requires us to have all the countries of the world with us. That's why the U.N. Security Council resolution is so important.
Is that likely?
I think that point is really very important, because nation building in a place like Iraq would be extremely difficult because of the nature of the population there with the Kurds. And the Kurds are fighting with each other. There are at least three parties, two large ones that would fight with each other. And the Shia would want to align themselves with the Iranian mullahs, and it would be a real disaster. So in many ways, the end of the war does not mean that there will be harmony within the population of Iraq that will create a stable regime of any sort. So I think that point is very well taken.
But Natalie, nobody's underestimating in the Bush administration the gravity of the task of nation rebuilding. There'll be a number of nations that will want to participate in this. Iraq itself has large resources of oil and certainly an educated populace. So let's not believe that this can't happen. I believe it can happen, and certainly, hopefully, we'll...
What's it, you mean?
Nation rebuilding and peace and security, and hopefully, democracy.
But I guess that's the question, is that our place in the world?
Well, certainly, if there is hostilities, we're going to have an obligation to participate in nation rebuilding with a number of other countries that have indicated that they are willing to help in that effort.
Dr. Hess? I'm not ignoring you. I know getting a time signal here.
The record of the United States in the Middle East as an imperial power is not there, really. Our relations with the Middle East before modern times was generally one in which we sent missionaries over, the business people and educators, to build their school system. And now we're going to send an army right into the middle of this area. We're going to disestablish the government, take off the leader, get rid of the people on the top, and then impose nation building on this society. That's an imperial task. It flies in the whole face of the history of nationalism in this region since the end of World War II. What happened to the British and the French when they tried to control this region? They were kicked out.
I wish the president was sitting here to rebut that. We'll be right back. We need to take a quick break.
The terrorists will reward us, will respect us, will fold up their machinery of death and simply disappear. If we think so, it is a cruel delusion. If we fail this, the first test of our determination to deal with this issue, it will not be the end. It will only be the beginning.
Sir?
One of the big issues with Iraq is, we know they have these chemical weapons, the anthrax, the smallpox, whatever. They're not voluntarily giving us the information where this stuff is. So we need to go in and make him tell us where this stuff is. They know it's there. Where is it? Everybody for years, since the Persian Gulf War, we know he hides stuff. He's probably hiding it now. I want to know where that stuff is.
Young man right here, please.
I'm quite sure I understand why it's important that we know exactly, because I really don't think that he'd use it when we're watching him, because then he knows that we'd go right in and take him out immediately.
So there's this whole issue of the belief of what will Hussein do and what will he not do?
Yeah. The question of the chemical weapons and all of these things is a very good question. And whoever said we need to have him tell us where it is is correct, and we need to have the United Nations involved to get all of that out. There is no question about it, because Saddam Hussein is a terrible man. He is a horror to his own nation, as well as to his neighbors, and he should be constrained. How do you do that? It's through these United Nations restrictions, inspections, and whatever else the United Nations would decide.
And let's be, I'm sorry, let's be clear. He would use them, and he has used them, against the Iranians. He's also used them against the Kurds in the north.
And against his own people.
So I think that is important, to lay that out.
Absolutely. Killed over a million Iranian people.
And committed genocide within his own country.
Dr. Barlow, looking at this through your psychologist's eyes, this Saddam Hussein, how do you weigh in on how these different points of view of how he might respond in various circumstances?
Well...
In other words, what do you think makes him tick in this context?
Well, that's a good question. Obviously, I haven't spoken to him directly, but we have been familiar for generations and millennia with people who are obsessed with power and who, whole life and whole being, is concerned with exerting greater and greater control and power, inflicting helplessness on others. Dictatorship is nothing new. You know, it goes back to the Romans and beyond. And there certainly is this capacity within some people to really just be incredibly evil. And I think we see this in some of the dictators today. And when you get somebody with power like that, particularly somebody who's going to act unpredictably. What's different from, say, 50 years ago is that terrorists can reach into the heartland, into the midst of our country, and create the prospect of horrible death and damage. And this is going to obviously make things, make a war in this day and age more difficult for the American people.
As we have already seen, yes, sir?
I think one of the points that seems to be being missed is that since 1991, at the end of the Gulf War, he signed an agreement that he was going to do certain things. He hasn't done those things. 1441 has said that he has to disarm. If he does not disarm, not find, there's no obligation for the inspectors to find anything. He has to disarm voluntarily. That's what it says. If he doesn't disarm, then he has serious consequences. That's what it says. And everyone on the Security Council knows that. And they're shirking their responsibility, because you have countries like France and Germany and Russia that do billions and billions of dollars of trade with Iraq, and they don't want him gone. Iraqi, you know what planes the Iraqis use? They use French Mirage jets. They buy Exocet missiles from France. The Germans sold the parts to the supergun that Iraq made in the '80s. Those all came from those nations, and they still do billions of dollars of trade with them. Russia is owed $12 billion by Iraq right now. They have no interest in getting rid of Hussein. I didn't vote for the U.N. to protect me. I voted George Bush to protect me. And he has the responsibility to do it. And I don't want Jacques Chirac and Vladimir Putin making decisions about my safety. And that's...
This gentleman has made an excellent point about the security and the security of Americans, that President Bush is trying to make sure that we protect, and he's absolutely right. What we're seeing is inspections, not disarmament, and we have to have disarmament.
But the administration also has an obligation to conduct diplomacy in a way that makes sense. Before we get into the first Gulf War, Secretary of State James Baker traveled around the world and met with the leaders of all the countries in advance. We acted like we cared what they thought at that time. I think that's a type of diplomacy we need to conduct now. And it seems to me that too many of the countries are alienated by comments that either Secretary Wolfowitz has made, or that the president makes here or there, or, for that matter, statements that Secretary of Defense Rumsfeld makes. So let's conduct the diplomacy the right way, and that's really how you get the U.N. to support us.
That's a very good point, though, you bring up about the economics of it. And I'd like to get to that discussion as well in just a moment. Perhaps there's an economic aspect to this we have not taken a look at yet. We'll be right back.
Tonight, young women at the Elite Air Force Academy.
I told him, "No!"
Abused, molested. Shocking stories about what's happening to our fighting daughters. 2020 tonight.
Then, therapy dogs. Hours after last week's nightclub tragedy, these canines went into action.
For a while, it was very cathartic.
See how they make a difference.
And minutes before disaster, new NASA video takes you inside the Columbia Cockpit.
A number of weather changes for us during the course of the weekend. I'll have my latest forecast at 11:00.
At Fleet, we recognize that time is the most precious gift we can give. That's why each week, Fleet Works employee volunteers offer their time to help organizations in need. Whether it's stocking food at the Greater Boston Food Bank, or landscaping and cleanup for organizations like Youth Build, Fleet Works volunteers are making a difference. Get involved. Become part of the solution. It's only a matter of time. Click on Commonwealth V, sponsored by Fleet.
As an educator, when I look at children, I see potential, and I see an opportunity to bring that potential out. I see kids that may have gotten lost if somebody didn't give them the attention that they needed. You can get involved in educating children through the donation of school supplies. You can volunteer as a tutor. You'll see right away the brightness in a child's eyes.
Commonwealth V, sponsored by Fleet, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Massachusetts, and the Boston Foundation.
Hey! No jokes. No gimmicks. Oh, and no down payment and no interest for one full year on any of this great furniture.
And Bernie and Phil's will even deliver your in-stock furniture the very next day.
Now, that's nice!
No kidding.
Bernie and Phil, quality, comfort, and price! That's nice!
...regime in Iraq would serve as a dramatic and inspiring example of freedom for other nations in the region.
I'd like to get to our audience a little bit more. If you would make your points, I know a number of you would come down to the end of our programs and people don't get to speak. Ma'am, right here, right in the front row. If you'd just be as quick as you can, so I can get around to as many of you as I can.
The issue is democracy in this country, and the most momentous decision that a nation can make is the decision to go to war. What's at stake here are our kids. We have a son over there and 200,000 troops. And the Iraqi children, this country has a population, half of the country is kids under the age of 15. And right now, George Bush is saying it is his decision to go to war. We're plaintiffs in a lawsuit that says it is not. It is Congress. Congress, under our constitution, has the authority to declare war. Where are you on this? Where is this declaration? Where is the debate about the declaration of war?
Do you want to just address that real briefly?
Well, I think...
She's referring to the fact that some think you've all passed the buck.
The stage right now is that diplomacy is being conducted, and it's an attempt, be it an attempt that might not be going as well as many of us would like, to get the countries of the world to come to a consensus, to come to an agreement about what to do about Saddam Hussein. That's the stage it's at, at this point.
No, but I think she's referring to the fact that Congress passed a resolution allowing the president to make this decision without you having to vote on war.
In the last Congress, there was a resolution that Congressman Mehan voted for, it was before I was a member of Congress, that authorized the president, as commander in chief, to engage in hostilities if needed to protect American security. That decision has been made by the Congress.
Well, I guess that's her point, that Congress is supposed to declare war, is your point, I gather.
That's unconstitutional, and hopefully, our lawsuit will change that. But I think you can change that as well, and you can take that back right now and have that discussion, debate and democracy.
Sir?
Excuse me. If removing Saddam Hussein from power is the correct action, and right now, we're trying to get other countries in the world to see our position on that, at what point is enough with other countries? At what point should we do the right thing regardless of what the rest of the world thinks?
Well, see, the resolution says that it's to disarm Saddam Hussein. Regime change was something the administration said early on, and then negotiated a resolution with the Congress that never mentioned regime change. So the question is, what really are we trying to do here? And I think there needs to be more honesty about that. But to your question, how long do we wait? We wait long enough, as it takes, to draw a consensus that allows us as a country to act, not unilaterally, but allows us as a country to act with a united force of all the countries of the world.
Did you have something? Yes, sir. We need more microphone holders, I guess. There you go. Right in the front row.
If we don't continue to bring more pressure to bear on the situation, then we would revert to the status quo. And I think it's time to recognize that the status quo cannot continue to exist. For America to maintain no-fly zones, patrol borders, enforce economic sanctions and so forth, simply increasingly promotes revile for Americans and increases activities of terrorism against us. The only other choice is to withdraw completely. That's not realistic. So nobody rationally wants to promote war. But we do have to keep putting the pressure on to move in the right direction to effect change in that area of the world.
And without that pressure, Saddam Hussein will try to remain in power. He told that to Dan Rather. He's a survivor, and he will try to keep as many of his weapons of mass destruction as he possibly can. And that's what this whole cat-and-mouse scheme of inspections is about. It has to be about disarmament. I totally agree with you.
Final thought from you, Marianne?
I agree with you as well. The question is, how are we going to put pressure on? The point is this, a military strike against Iraq is something where we'll pay the consequences afterwards if we try to go it alone or without the U.N. Security Council. What does the U.N. mean if we're just going to go around the U.N. and take military action in a country where clearly it's not an imminent threat? Let's disarm Saddam Hussein, but let's do it the right way.
Evan Grace, a final thought?
There's been a lot of talk about potential strained relationships with our allies. And so one potential economic risk that is out there is, what if the more diplomatic strains turn into more trade-related strains? There have been anecdotes here, restaurant here or there, boycotting French wines, French fries becoming Freedom Fries. So in and of itself, nothing major. But there's certainly the potential down the road for that to turn into more of an important trade dispute, and that would have to be managed.
Dr. Hess, a final thought?
Foreign students may go elsewhere than Boston. That's a worry on my side.
Spoken like a true professor. No, seriously.
Self-interest. Self-interest. No, but indeed, there is no question about the fact that there is a component of the whole discussion that we should deal with Saddam Hussein because he's a menace. But the point that Congressman Mehan made several times is that we need to do it, but we need to do it in the right way. Otherwise, the outcome of it will be more terrible than what we have today.
And from the psychological end of things, including our soldiers who are abroad and what they might be going through, your thoughts to the anxious American public?
Well, I do think that the Department of Homeland Security, which is obviously just getting their feet on the ground and trying to get organized, has to do a better job of involving the American people in a way that will help them put aside some of their fear and anxiety and show their true resilience, let their resilience come through, and be able to deal with this, whether it's Osama bin Laden, or Saddam Hussein, or any one of an unnamed number of threats, to be able to deal effectively with the kind of emotions that it arises.
As we close here, Dr. Albaz, could you just give the folks watching a sense of how important is Iraq to the Muslim world?
It is not at all. Iraq has already, since the Gulf War, Saddam Hussein and the regime in Iraq have lost all credibility. There has not been a single person that has any quality whatsoever that visited Iraq. Iraq has not been visited by head of state from anybody. So it really is, he is a small-time thug. He's a bully. And if he is left alone, he will disappear. He is no bigger than Nasr. Nasr had made the Arab world a huge operation at the time, and he disappeared in history very quietly. Saddam Hussein is a much better, a much smaller bug there that could certainly be, that can fade away if he's forgotten.
All right. Thank you. We'll be back with a final thought in a minute. To thank our guests who have come here, and I know that these two gentlemen just flew in from Washington tonight. They were voting all week. We very much appreciate your thoughts and your expertise and sharing that with you. And to our town meeting members, too. I know it's frustrating that everyone doesn't get a chance to speak, because there just is not enough time. And perhaps we raised more questions than we did answers. On the other hand, perhaps it's something to think about. It's impossible, perhaps, for a free society to be as secure as some other countries.